All right, it's been a late you folks all set? Steve, you all set? All right, afternoon, everyone. Welcome to this June 6th, 2024 regular scheduled school board meeting. Apologies for us being a few minutes late. We were just wrapping some things up. We'll go ahead and start with the pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, first up on our agenda, we have one of the most exciting times of in that actually times of our school board calendar. We have honorees and retirees that we like to honor. So Sean, would you like to come up and talk about some of our honorees? Sean?
Fine.
Other Sean?
I was like, what am I saying?
Please feel free to jump in there.
He's very comfortable with a microphone.
Good evening. Just want to take a moment to recognize two of my staff members that are retiring this year. Combined total of 64 years of experience are retiring this year. One is Adele Walker, who is a paraprofessional. She's been with us for 26 years. During her tenure, she worked primarily with our early elementary school children. For the past 12 years, she has played a crucial role in our preschool program, working alongside Anne Casey. She is a team player who is highly supportive of our program. She would always build strong relationships with the children that she worked one-on-one with and aided in the transitioning of their preschool students to our kindergarten program. Her positive energy, smile, and can-do attitude will be missed, and we wish her the best of luck in her new chapter of life. Thank you, Adele. The next teacher who's retiring this year is June Williamson. June has been at Newmarket Elementary School for 38 years. She completed her UNH internship at the elementary school and liked it so much, she decided to stay. June started a job, started with a job sharing position for several years, and then became a longstanding member of our fourth grade team. During her time in the fourth grade, on the fourth grade team, June spent countless hours developing learning opportunities that had the children actively involved in their learning. Two fine examples of this are the ABC New Hampshire books. I'm sure some of my high school students here could probably remember those. And the picture writing that they did as well. June is highly supportive of her peers and mentored many of members of our current staff. For June, her career was all about the children. She developed strong bond with each child she worked with and made sure that they received all the services and academic challenges that they needed. She remembers all of her students and keeps in contact with many of them throughout the years. If you were in June Williams's classroom, you became Mrs. Williams's student for life. Any yes will sorely miss June Williamson.
Thank you, Sean.
Thank you.
Andy or Sean, do you want to come up and do the retirees from the middle? Either one?
I'm sure Sean was going to make me get baseball.
I got that.
All right, all right. Thank you, good evening. Special thanks to my staff and my administrative cohorts for helping me come up with this tonight. We have five retirees here from the junior senior high that have accumulated over 140 years in education as professionals, 110 of them here in Newmarket alone. We've only been here the past two years. I'd rely on others to share stories and anecdotes about each of them from their years in teaching. First up is math teacher Kristen Kiefer, who's been working here in Newmarket for 26 years. She interned here in 96, 97. She's taught in our math and science department and has served as our math department leader. Both her children are NJSHS graduates. When I asked staff to share their thoughts with me about Kristen, several of them commented on her infectious laugh. One coworker said, quote, "Kristen is the best laugh that can be heard down the hall. I'll miss hearing it on a cheerful laughter each morning." Her coworkers shared that she's always supportive and joy to be around. Federal math teacher Megan Avril shared that Kristen has always been a supportive and kind coworker. One day, I had a tough day, and I left the math department meeting very upset. I came home late that night to find a small box of chocolates and flowers to cheer me up on my front doorstep. Perhaps science teacher Linda Albright has best send-off advice for Kristen. I wish for her to find delight in an ice cream sundae as big of a fishbowl because that is something I know brings her real pleasure. Congratulations, Kristen.
Just wanted to thank you very much.
Next up is Liz Boyle. Liz started teaching here, teaching, her teaching career in 1987, and has spent the last 19 years of it, of her 37 years here at NJSHS. She currently teaches sixth grade language arts and is a hallmark of an exemplary English teacher. Her background in special education was evident in her ability and willingness to differentiate instruction for any of her students. Liz has been a team leader, often facilitating meetings with parents and fellow educators, as well as addressing concerns on behalf of her team. From her field trips to hot chocolate hour here in the library, Liz has created learning activities that are fun, engaging, and educational. To speak to her character, Megan Avril shared, "I consider Liz a lifelong friend because of her selflessness and consideration for others. I know that she would drop anything if needed to help someone in need." Linda Albright shared the story that when Liz broke both of her arms in a ski accident, she persevered and persisted here in school, having to go to the nurse anytime she needed to use the restroom, well, because she couldn't use her arms. Thank you, Liz. Next up is Anne Marie Pilar. Began teaching, her teaching career in 1986 and is about to finish her 38th year. She's been part of the NJHS family for the past 19 and currently serves as our sixth grade special education case manager. Anne Marie is a team player and always puts kids first. She cares for and assists all students and will not hesitate to pick up the phone or call a parent in order to establish a relationship or discuss a concern. When one middle school teacher shared that she, quote, "loved working on team with Anne Marie." Her presence in the classroom was always warm and welcoming, and her willingness to support all kids is unmatched. Paraprofessional Pam Lamir shared, "Anne Marie is the best supervisor I've ever had. She's an excellent role model, and I miss watching her interact with all of her students. She has a big heart and a kind soul." Thank you, Liz. Next up is Kathy El Doraji. Has she spent the last 23 years working here at NJSHS? Kathy has been willing to take on the most challenging students and has a deeper understanding of who they are behind their sometimes tough exteriors. She's always, she always makes her students feel valued while holding them to high expectations. Kathy has always, always been and remains a beacon of optimism and positivity. Mark Levitt shared, "Kathy has a heart of gold. She sees the positives in everything despite the curveballs in life and has always managed to lift others who have struggled doing their own. Her presence will be sorely missed." Another coworker shared, "Kathy is an amazing positive force in the building. She's going to be sorely missed by so many of us and our students. She's one of the purest, kindest souls we have to offer as a model for our students on how to be a beautiful human being. She puts her heart into everything she does and, as a result, make the inner light of others shine more brightly." Thank you, Kathy. And last, but certainly not least, Janice Murray. Janice is our resident mahjong master. Started teaching in 1985 and has spent the last 24 years here in Newmarket. She's someone who goes above and beyond, working to help students, and her willingness to get to her students' level has always been one of her greatest strengths. I was told that one year she put on some water wings and goggles and got into a dunk tank during field day, and the kids thought it was the greatest thing ever. Free advertising, anyone doesn't know, Janice works at Kohl's in Rochester. Over the years, she has purchased clothing and other necessary supplies for students in need out of her own money. Her coworker and friend Linda Albright shared with me that Janice was instrumental in organizing professional development summer experiences for our science department. This brought us together in unique and exciting ways to experience science. We've had many chances to bond and connect with other staff in retreat experiences. She organized so many experiences with the bedrock of a solid 12 years of integrated science department. Selfishly, Janice is also integral to our most challenging part of the day, middle school lunch. She assists students every day with their pizza needs and whatever else pops up, and has never-ending desire to help kids get outside for recess, and for that, I am always eternally grateful. Thank you, Janice. Thank you all.
Thank you very much. We also have another person we'd like to recognize, Andrew Hemmiker, who served with us for three years on the, on the board. We really appreciate your time, and we're going to miss your leadership and assistance throughout those years.
And actually, just one retire, if I could just jump in, who wasn't able to be here tonight, Bob Higgins. Many of you know Bob as our data specialist for the district. If you've ever used Infinite Campus or any of those systems that we have, he's the guy behind it. Bob is retiring after five years here in Newmarket, and we wish him great success in his future endeavors. He's not going to disappear entirely. He's volunteered to come back and help us with the transition. So thank you, Bob, for your, your time.
All right, we'll move on to public comment period since we have so many people here. If anyone would like to come up and speak, we'll open the floor at 5:30. Rushing up to talk.
Should I go up now?
Yeah, Sean, yeah. What do you got?
I was wondering when I should come up.
Come on up, Sean.
Okay, so I would like to announce my transition from myself as school board representative to Olivia. So, Dr. Allen and other members of the school board, it is my pleasure to introduce you, 2024, 2025, student elected representative to the school board, Olivia Blackador. Olivia is going to be a senior in the fall. She has very actively evolved in the school community as she is part of numerous clubs, such as the Newmarket Environmental Team, Interact Club, Student Athletic Leadership Team, and National Honor Society. Olivia is also vice president of her class and president of prom committee. On the athletic side, Olivia is also part of the Newmarket Girls Soccer Team. As a student athlete, most find it hard to balance the athletic side along with their education. However, Olivia finds the time to complete all of her assignments and does very well in the classroom. Outside of school, Olivia volunteers her time and service in order to benefit the community. Recently, she's volunteered with the local nonprofit Haven at their annual Kids Are Our Business Breakfast, where their Violence Prevention Education Program and Camp Hope. Olivia is involved in numerous community cleanups, helps collect canned food for the shelter, and makes Cards for Rests of the Pines. Olivia can be described as friendly, caring, determined, hardworking, funny, and passionate. During her downtime, Olivia's favorite things to do are hang out with friends and family, play soccer, and take long naps. As the newly elected school board representative, she is excited to communicate with the members of the school board about what is going on with the high school.
Welcome, Olivia. We'll look forward to seeing you in the fall. I assume we probably don't have a student prep report for tonight.
Olivia, I would like to find a time, I was talking to Mr. Corman sometime next week for the three of us to kind of sit down and just kind of talk about the job. We can answer your questions, kind of help you understand things, and I'm sure Sean can also give you some advice. Your, your napping skills might come in handy at the board table, I don't know.
I'm sure they will.
Well, welcome.
All right, we'll move right into board comments committee updates. Anyone have any comments they'd like to make? Any committee updates? Bonnie, would you like to?
We had the Teacher Growth and Evaluation Committee. We had another meeting. We mostly reviewed our homework, where we looked at research, sample educator growth and valuation plans. Worked with Karen Matzos to kind of review all of that and discussed in depth an article that talked about the important, most important components in a teacher growth plan versus just evaluating. So really focusing on growth and development of teachers.
Yeah, it was a really good meeting, and I promise I'll get my homework done next time.
Policy committee met and went over accomplishments of the last year and sort of patted ourselves on the back for a bit, and then, then we left, no. We talked about what our policies were, what we want to look at to prioritize for the coming year, and so I think we're going to have another full year of policy work.
And I think we also stopped to take a minute to appreciate the work that Andrew had done with the policy committee last year. In fact, one of the items on the agenda is wrapping up of Andrew's last.
I know it's typos.
Still reading the packets. All right, thank you all. Head right into superintendent report. Did you have one?
Yeah, I do, I do, actually. I was just looking at the agenda. Yeah, I have a handful of things I wanted to mention. Lot has gone on. I thank you, by the way, for bearing with my absence at the last meeting. I was in Oyster River celebrating the retirement of Dr. Morris over there, so I appreciate your, your tolerating my absence, and I know Patty did a great job while I was away. No, see, there you go. Patty did that good of a job. You didn't even notice I wasn't here. That's good. Couple of things I wanted to mention to you. I went to my first REC Connect event in Newmarket. For those who don't know, it's a, a community event done every year, or at least every year, to bring together all the different community entities that work with the community, with children, and so forth. It's a wonderful thing hosted by the Newmarket REC. It was just really great to hear from all the different organizations and the great work they're doing, and give me a chance to brag that Newmarket Junior Senior High was one of the top high schools in the, in the state, and got a nice round of applause from the, from the crowd. So a lot, a lot of pride there. Second thing I wanted to mention, the, you know, Phil is the representative for the board on the master plan committee, but I have been working with Bart McDonough on a couple of questions. They're, they're going to be doing a survey coming out over the summer, and they asked if the school district had any things that we wanted to include, and so Phil and I sort of coordinated on it. There are going to be a couple of questions that will deal with some facilities, potential issues for, that might have relevance to the school district. One that will target the issue of, would, would people support the idea of additional athletics field space in the district? And the other is a question regarding kind of emergency preparedness, generator power, and, plug your ears, kids, air conditioning in the schools as a possible long-term solution. Anyway, kind of getting.
Won't happen when any of them are here.
But kind of looking at whether or not that's something the community would support, given we know climate change is a real thing, and it's getting, there's more and more warm, warm days, and frankly, more power outages, too. So anyway, those are a couple of questions that are going to be in the survey. I'm looking forward to hearing what the community has to say about it. Couple of things I just want to mention to you as something to kind of mentally prepare you for, because I will be asking for you to make some decisions at the next meeting. The Employee Handbook Committee has completed its work. It took us a little longer than I would have liked, the final step involving just getting it one last time through attorneys, as you can imagine, took a little longer. But in order to have it ready to be, to be in place for July 1, I will share it with you electronically here in the next week for you to be able to take a look at it. We'll review it at the next meeting, but I would ask for the board to be ready to make a decision on that because the handbook includes all kinds of benefits that year-round employees would start experiencing on, on the first, and it's just important that we have that in place. So just plant that seed with you. The other thing that I did want to mention is something to expect as a proposal that I, we won't need a decision next meeting, but I want to give it to you next meeting. We have begun to have some conversations at the elementary school around supporting some of our kids that have some behavioral challenges and not, we're not, not talking in the special ed realm. We're talking what we often refer to as a tier-two world, kids that are struggling with behavioral challenges, particularly in the K1, 2 levels, and helping them to better function in schools. And so we are going to have a proposal to bring to you. You may recall, a couple of meetings ago, I mentioned we've applied for a grant that would involve some behavioral health and mental health supports. I would love to say we're going to get that grant and that will pay for it all, but we don't know yet whether we're going to be getting that grant, but the issues that we're dealing with are real, and so I want to have a conversation with you next meeting about that. So expect a proposal from me on that next meeting. And then really, the last thing I just wanted to talk about is, as you know, it's the end of the school year, and a lot of really great stuff is happening around the, the school district just in the last couple of days. I've been to the third grade science fair, been to the fifth grade endangered species project, had lunch with the top 10, and just a whole bunch of stuff. Tonight, obviously, there's senior awards, tomorrow's graduation, and then a little thing that school ends next Thursday, too. Beyond that, there've been countless field trips, and there are field days planned. It's just a really exciting time in the Newmarket School District, and I just wanted to say, there's a lot going on, but our kids are having a great time, and it wouldn't be right to let a meeting go by without acknowledging that we have had some fantastic athletic performances in this district the last week or so. Our girls softball team is playing in the state championship on Saturday at 7 o'clock in Plymouth. Our boys baseball team is playing in the state championship at Delta Dental Stadium at 1 o'clock on Saturday, and Alana Hagan is running in the New England Championship, representing Newmarket in the 800 meter. And we also had some really successful track athletes competing in the, at the meet of champions last week. We had a runner in the 1600 as well as in the, one of the relays, so I just want to shout out to all those great, great performances this spring. And that's all I have.
Thank you very, very much. All right, we will head right into presentations. We're fortunate enough to have Mark Levitt and Katie Bizzle to talk about their trip to the area.
Steve, can we get the monitor on, because I think there's a power.
Yeah, there is. I didn't know, last time I shared one, and you all just looked at it, so I didn't know if it was going to be up tonight or not. I sent it, whatever is your preference. I told.
Why don't you go ahead? Yeah, start.
Yes, well, I was lucky enough, these are some of the kids. Savannah also joined us on the trip. So April break, you all know, we took 16 kids to Germany, Austria, and Switzerland. We did nine days in the trip. It feels like so long ago that Mark and I were up here asking permission to go, or kind of giving you the heads up that we were going. It was a long countdown, and then all of a sudden, we were in Europe together, but it was wonderful. We did, this is my big brag, and I put it in the presentation, too. We did three countries, four, if you count Liechtenstein. We were there, three countries, five hotels, nine days, not a single lost item, which I'm like, I can do anything now. We did this, no lost passwords, no lost phones, no lost anything.
No lost children?
No lost children, which was pretty high on the list, not losing any of the kids. And we got a wonderful, wonderful compliment from our tour guide. He said that they are, and he does, he works for four different companies, and he's an independent tour guide. He tours all over Europe. He said that they are the best group that he has ever had for logistics. He gave them compliments. They were always early for everything. They always went to the bathroom ahead of time, so we never had to stop. They never lost anything. So for us, post-COVID as kind of our first trip back was a really, really nice compliment. 16 kids is a lot when you're in another country. I think we could, we could handle more on a future trip. It went really well, but that was really nice reinforcement that they showed up the way that we hoped they would, is a really nice brag for them also on our part. So they would love to tell you a little bit about what they liked about it, if you have some time for them.
Katie, I am going to apologize. It looks like we don't have your PowerPoint, so roll with it.
I'm Lyndall. I can say with confidence that without like the help of the community and everyone here, like it would be really hard for me to get that type of opportunity. I'd probably have to wait until I retire, so I was really, I'm really thankful for that, and I think everyone who went on there are really well-mannered kids. There wasn't anything that was, there was nothing that was really embarrassing, where people were like, oh, my gosh, we're Americans, please don't say that. Nothing like that. So I think we got really lucky, and I would do it again if I could. It was amazing.
I'm Chris, and it was definitely a, like.
Chris, what's your last name?
Smith.
Just checking. Any relation to anyone?
Not sure, not sure. Yeah, but it was definitely something that I feel like it was definitely a trip of a lifetime. It's something that I feel like I would, like, it sort of fulfilled, I wanted to do it, like, it's something that I'll never be able to do again, really. So, um, over there.
I know your dad, I bet you he'll take you.
Maybe, I don't know, but over there, it was just amazing, like, all the things we were able to do, like, we really didn't have that much restrictions, and I know everything went really well despite the fact, but we were able to do pretty much everything after our tours and all these different places we went to. And there were some awkward moments, but it didn't ruin, didn't ruin our trip. So I feel like even through those times, we did persevere, and we did go through it. A part that I remember, just like one of my favorite parts, we were in Switzerland. No, nothing bad. We were in Switzerland. We were in Switzerland, and it was just really beautiful. We went up on this mountain, Mount Pilatus. It was just really amazing, and it's something that I feel like I was really privileged to be able to go on, and it's something that I'll remember for probably the rest of my life.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Magnolia. One of the things that I liked when we were on our trip is just, like, we got a lot of free time, like, after our tour guide kind of showed us around the city, we could kind of like go out with our friends and just kind of like explore for ourselves, and I feel like that was really like, like, also just eye-opening because we could see the culture just for ourselves and like, without having someone like talk to us about it, we could just kind of like explore everything. Yeah, like Chris said, it was just like the trip of a lifetime, and I feel like also how Lyndall said, like, the fundraising and everything like that helped a lot, and just like being able to like, like, it's not every day that you get to go to Europe, and like just being able to go there with like, like, some of my best friends, like my favorite teachers, like, that was really, like, I was really thankful for that.
I know Mark and I, he's going to talk to you about his next trip, but we really are trying to kind of make this as much as possible, something that continues, something that gives other students opportunities to have these same experiences, and I know that Mr. Ang and I have talked about in our meeting, doing some trips that might be closer still internationally. I know you're doing Montreal this weekend. We were just talking about how it's a beautiful city, going some trips that are closer, even some domestic trips. We have beautiful places in the United States, but at the core of it, I think that Mark is going to mention it, too. We really would just love for kids at Newmarket to have the opportunity to travel, and like they all said, the support from you all and the support from the community is, it makes it happen, so thank you for that.
Well, I think the support from you folks, being willing to put all the research in and bring it forward, helping the kids through it, is really what made it happen, so thank you.
Yeah, it's a good team effort.
Thank you very much.
I'm Mark Levitt, social studies teacher, but I've been here.
I'm Mark Levitt, social studies teacher, but I've been here too long. Anyway, so that was great to hear what you guys had said, that was awesome. It's almost verbatim what I had said after I did my high school trip. I did two years, and it was awesome. And that's what got me hooked. So I wanted to bring it back to New Market. So first trip was this one here, which is great, turned out awesome. Our next trip is scheduled next year for Ireland and Scotland. We get 18 kids, three chaperones, eight days. Right now, we're fully booked, things look good. We'll start getting into our meetings about the trip itself in September, and then it goes just really fast, making sure passports are all, you know, ready and stuff like that. We're hoping to make a decision for 2026 in September, where we're going to go, and talking with Katie about it, having that two-year window makes it easier for kids financially. So they're like, oh, I got two years, I can save the money, I got a couple of summers, I can pocket it. So that's why we're kind of doing that two-year window piece. Did just send out a survey for all the staff, looking for, like, kind of like a cohort of staff that are interested in doing this kind of stuff, besides Katie and I, because, you know, that's a lot of travel, I can't believe I said that, but yeah. So the idea is to get a revolving group that supports one another, makes the plans, gets everything going. So if we can keep it going, maybe we will get to a point where we see one, two, maybe even three trips a year going in different locations, as long as we get the staff behind it to go as chaperones. And yeah, definitely do like domestic trips, you know, you've got the Pacific Northwest, you've got Yosemite, you've got, you know, Grand Canyon, that kind of stuff, too. DC trip could be thrown in there. So if any ideas from the community, too, about locations, just throw them our way. And I think the ultimate goal will be, once we get it rolling, kind of have destinations influenced by kids more than the adults, because it's where they want to go. So that's all I had to say about the trips, and thank you guys for saying such wonderful things. That was great. But I guess that's it.
Well, I know I, for one, am really thrilled that our first experience was so successful, it kind of sets in motion, you know, lots of future possibilities, and I do appreciate Mark and Katie, and obviously Silas, I know was there as well. Having the staff that are willing to do this is really what makes it possible, and enthusiastic kids, and, and, you know, obviously, well-behaved kids, makes it a lot of fun to do. So thank you, everybody.
Thanks, guys. Thanks, Mark. All right, we've been to our discussion items. Does anyone have any correspondence to share? No? Pardon me, I do have one item. Amy and I separately received some correspondence regarding people who are employed by the SE, or by the district, I should say. I'm trying not to be too specific, because really, those kind of letters or correspondence should be directed through the building principals and then to Todd, so I'm concerned if I talk too much about it, it'll start generating, or too specific, it'll generate more kind of, of those letters, but just wanted to acknowledge that we've received a couple items.
And if I, if you wouldn't mind, just to acknowledge, just for the, the community and for reminder to the board, policy KEB kind of spells out sort of the role the board plays and concerns raised regarding staff and program. And clearly, while you can hear anything anybody wants to tell you, you do have to maintain your separation in the event that an issue were to come to the board that required decision-making, you don't want to have gotten involved in it too soon. So Personnel Matters should always be directed back to the building into the superintendent's office. Okay?
Thank you. Discussion item number two is Board Docs Online Training. I assume everyone's received the logins and has looked at the training if you wanted to. I think it's pretty straightforward, but all right, we'll blow right past that. Excuse me, budget process. We talked last week about just if there's any remaining items, anyone has interest in being talked about or being brought in front of you, is there anything, you thought of anything?
Well, I think we think we'll, one of the things we'd asked about was, do you remember?
Microphone.
Should be.
Oh.
One of the things we'd asked about is just a level service outlook on what that would be the other sense of things that.
We should be able to do that within the next couple of meetings. I know Jana will be doing the fourth quarter financials, that might be the best time to do that, maybe on the July 7th, 11th meeting? That might be the best time to do that?
Sure.
You okay with that?
Yeah, thanks. Billy was someone else, I was going to say regarding budget, but I didn't bring my notes, so I will skip it.
Well, we did, we did have just some discussion about negotiations in a, in a non-meeting.
Yeah. Budget adjacent.
Budget adjacent, if you're correct.
Sure. Number, I, I remember four, our school board committee goals.
Actually, if you wouldn't mind, yes. Phil and I met the other day and made some revisions to what, I mean, a revision, I should say.
Thank you.
All right. Do you want to say anything about them, Phil, or should we just take a few minutes?
So, I mean, the only thing we really changed, and I haven't seen the exact language, so that is the first, so I'm reading the first one for the first time, too-ish, that was around the first one. So that was the one where we had had the, admittedly, like, I think I was pushing for this, like, a metric against which, like, we were measuring, like, we wanted some percentage increase in student achievement, and with the desire to still see increased student achievement, they kind of had a good conversation around, you know, in the army, you used to say, if you get too far in front of your troops, you start looking like the enemy. So like, if we try to get too far ahead of like, like, a collaborative conversation with members of the district, that we would end up probably creating the opposite impact of what we actually want to see. So in the interest of helping create that collaborative approach towards achieving ultimately metrics that are in alignment with the vision of a graduate, we talked about how we might rewrite goal number one.
But actually, just very quickly reading it, it kind of ties into that multi-year goal idea, I think, as well, because it's something we could start working on, create that metric, and kind of monitor over the years, so yeah.
When Phil and I were talking the other day, one of the things we were talking about is, we need, and see, I like the analogy of getting out ahead of our, our troops, or our skis, whatever you want to call it, because we have to have a dialogue around data, and the original goal jumped right to a place of setting a target number, and I think where we need to do is, we need to have the conversation about what is it we value in our school, and then use those things to set future targets, whether it's standardized data scores, or maybe it's something to do with graduation rates, or whatever, but it would allow us to have that conversation. So I think it was kind of retooling it to be something that the board could engage in over the course of the year versus something that's aspirational, but we're, we have work to do before we can achieve it.
Reading the, reading the, the revision here, one thing that does pop to my eye quickly is, one, I think it's more than a metric, I think it's metrics, right? Like, I think there's probably several metrics that we're going to want to, like, use to, there's danger in a single data point, right? Like, I'm looking to, which is why standardized tests, I think, it's danger in using them as the only data point around like performance, the, and, but I do get concerned saying that goes beyond standardized test scores, because I think that might be a piece of what the metrics are that we're looking at. So I just wonder if it's just develop metrics to track district progress towards aligning the vision, progress towards like, I don't even know if it's aligning, but it's like achievement of vision of a graduate, or?
Reflective.
Yeah, that reflect, yeah, metrics that reflect, that's a great one. Because ultimately, what we're looking for is, we have this great vision, and if we don't want it to become something on a shelf, there has to be some accountability measures, which would be, what metrics are we leveraging to look at how we're achieving it? Which could then inform our regular cadence of student reports, which right now, because of just, that's the data we have, are standardized reports.
Yeah. For the second one, we talked about 10% increase in community engagement. Did you have an idea for what that measure would be?
We didn't really talk about this one, sorry.
No, that's fine. I know we have a few items left on the agenda, and we are bugging up against awards and which ones people want to go to. And I'm fine, continue to discuss it, or we could set up a workshop to try to get these nailed out before the next meeting, or they have to probably follow us just to get it done. Just, do people have a preference?
I mean, can we do this at the, finish it at the next meeting? Is there something that is holding us?
Well, we're getting up against the superintendent meeting to get prior to his goals, which are based on our goals.
Here was the other thing we talked about that I think is, it's a salient point. Right now, we write board goals, and we ask the administration superintendent to write his goals based on the board goals, and then there's like building goals, right? But ultimately, the board has our goals, which are the board's goals, not the district's goals. And really, the administration and the board have two complementary, different roles to play in achievement of district goals. And I wonder if at some point, there's, it makes sense for us to like, what are the district's goals? And then the administration's goals, while dotted line to the board goals are different, not necessarily like just cascading out of, because the functions are so different, we're sort of asking, pretty caught in a weird place, right? To be like, come up with administration goals based on our goals? Because our goals are just, we have a role to play, but it is a discreet role, as is administration's, in achievement of a combined, shared vision and goal for the district.
Yeah. I mean, one of the things that Phil and I chatted about was, we, in some ways, we get all these parallel things happening, and at some point, it's got to all coalesce around what's the district's goals. We have, and for good reasons, the junior-senior high has engaged in the EAS process. Before I even came on, there'd been a year and a half's worth of work on developing the, the work that's there. So there's a, a school growth plan coming out of the junior-senior high. There's another one that's going to come out of the elementary school that are very similar, but at some point, they have to be blended together, and so how does this all work together towards those district goals? And I think we're, we're not quite there yet.
Yeah.
But I think that should be ultimately where we want to get, so that we have a vision of who we want to be as a district, and then everything is feeding that vision.
And I say that in the spirit of your comment, that, well, I mean, I say that in general, but also of, would we be holding up the superintendent's ability to author goals? I mean, we're like, we're wordsmithing here. We're not like changing the spirit of these.
True.
Like, is there, I guess I would ask the superintendent and the board, if they're comfortable, we think there's enough here, close enough, 80% solution, that you'd be able to get your goals done, and we can then wordsmith this in the next meeting? It's a thought, I don't like.
And I can do just about anything that you guys ask me to do. I, I, so I can.
Yeah, he's pretty amazing.
And I don't, and I wouldn't necessarily do well, I understand. But it would help to have a sense of, are these the four areas of focus that the board thinks are where we want to be? And then, yes, I could certainly begin to develop them, and then when you finalize them, I can then go back and refine.
I mean, my point of view is we're not that far away.
Yeah.
We're just, we're, we're looking for small adjustments we can make to this to make it as concrete as we can, but I mean, does, I mean, does anybody see something major on here that's either missing, or if you look at it and say, no, we should pick that out, or we look forward, we have that, we even write it entirely?
No, and I think as long as we don't have something or put something in there that's so specific that the superintendent needs to specifically include it in his goals, we probably would be fine doing that. The issue with wordsmithing is that we have to do it in a meeting, so next meeting may be fairly long, we can do it then, if it's fine with me, or we can do it some other time. Maybe we should just all come back with comments about what we think.
Yeah.
If there's any modifications or whatever, we could try to plus it up at the next meeting. Does that work with you?
It's fine with me.
Okay. Great. All right, we will add that to our next agenda, thank you. We do have a first reading of policy B-I-A-R, the new board orientation. Phil and Dan, I believe, met and had some tweaks to the existing proposed B-I-A-R.
With all due respect to the great Andy Comer, I think we just, we moved a few things around in ordering and flow, I think we added a few links to it. There was no like real substantive change, and again, we, we approved the policy, it was just the R document, not just, but, so I don't think that there was anything of major substance that we feel like we changed.
Yeah, we tried to look at it through the lens of, you know, whenever you have something that's more important, maybe you assume someone's going to stop reading at the first page. What did we want from incentive, so that if someone doesn't make it all the way through, they can make some important things away? That was really the major change that we made.
I think, line out to give you homework, but if there's anything, being a new member, is there anything specifically you see on there, or if you want to come back next meeting and think like, oh, that doesn't make any sense, or why are we excluding that, or why didn't we add this, or, that'd be great?
Yeah, I got familiarized with it, with my orientation, it was very easy to navigate.
Great.
Yeah, I'm happy to, see, I think I have actually both versions, to see, I have the previous version printed, to look and see if it's.
And for the record, we never adopted the B-I-A-R, so we don't officially have a B-I-A-R yet.
Oh, we didn't adopt that? I thought we adopted the policy.
Well, you don't have to officially adopt the R, anyway, it's procedural, but I think because this involves board direction, and I think you want it to be more involved in the development of the procedural document. So in the end, what matters is, is it helpful to new board members, and frankly, old board members as well? Like, is it, does it contain information that's useful?
Yeah. Yeah, so let's talk about board goals. We're on schedule, sort of.
See, we're good.
We're, we're learning, we're getting better each meeting, each year. All right, headed to donations, we received a very generous donation, I'd like to acknowledge from the NCEP for eighth-grade classroom books, $748.47, which is very nice. Technically, I haven't closed, closed public comments, so I'm going to go ahead and close that at 6:02. Didn't want to get any more awkward for Sean, and I already lost some of that. Probably just made it really worse. And then we just have some minutes to approve, actually, just one set of minutes. Second motion to approve the May 16, 2024 minutes.
So.
Second.
Motion by Dan, most by Phil, excuse me, second by Dan. Any discussion? I did have one item, if I can recall it. It's what I mentioned, we should start using the term level services. It was recorded as, we should start using level services rather than level funding. And we see that the word term, because we've always been using level services, funding. We just weren't using the term. I think that was the only thing I had. As I recall. Amy, did you have anything? Okay. Great. Okay, and so, all in favor?
All right.
Are the manifests kicking around? Lonnie, you want to do the honors?
Sure. I think I got overzealous, I signed one, and I, like.
Oh, that's it?
Blew it down the table. I need some guidance.
Oh, yeah. So you're going to say, I, open it up real quick.
Okay.
Where's the document? That's how much you want on?
Phil could do it too, I'm sorry, I put you on the spot like that.
All right, no, that's okay. It's big enough that I can read it. So, just reading the number.
So, there you go. I make a motion to approve the manifest in the amount of $1,660,040. Sorry.
Great, thank you. Let me go a second back.
Six million.
I said six.
Second.
One million.
One billion.
One billion dollars! Oh, man, I dated myself.
We probably need to make sure the numbers, what is the actual number?
The actual number, 1,660,160.40.
Thank you very much. Any discussion on that? All in favor?
All right.
I'm sorry.
There you go. Next time.
I did. No thumbs up this time.
All right. Four goals we're not going to do right now. Last meeting, I kind of screwed up on when I asked for the motion. We'd actually approved, like, by signing the MOA for the sick day buyout. I feel that we approved those. When I asked for a motion, it was to start discussions. So just to be formal, I'm going to ask for a motion to approve the MOA regarding sick day buyback.
So, second.
Thank you. Apologize for that. I didn't have my right-hand person guiding me carefully through the day. All right. Any discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. I don't think we have any Personnel Matters that I'm aware of. No.
That I'm aware of either.
Don't have any, non-public meeting. Next meeting will be here on June 20th at 5:15. Take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion by Phil, second by Amy. All in favor?
Aye.
That we adjourned at 6:06 PM.